Welcome everyone to the first ordinary meeting, if you like, of the triennium. And it's great to have a good audience here as well. I'd like to declare the meeting open. And just in terms of the housekeeping, could you please let the democracy adviser know if you intend to leave the meeting? Morning tea will be at 10:30. The meeting, and we can now livestream all meetings, we've now got all the technology working, so the meeting will be livestreamed. Cameras behind me and up there. Can you also please, audience as well, if you can turn your phones to silent, it would be really good. So we're going to start with Karakia. I have no apologies. In terms of announcements, just the one I did want to do, just because we have six new members here, and so welcome to you all particularly. Just in terms of the standing orders, so at council meetings, we always stand to speak. So at Strategy and Policy Committee meetings and other meetings, we don't, but at council, you stand. And normally, we have three minutes for council meetings. I am going to move that we suspend one standing order just for the maiden speeches. So I'll do that in just a moment. But usually, it's three minutes. And there is a right to, if you're still going and you want an extension of time, often somebody will say, hey, I'll move an extension for councillor, whoever it is, and we do that. As mayor, I get 10 minutes if I need it. Hopefully, most of the time, I won't need to do that. So I'm going to move that we suspend, under standing order 3.2.1, that we suspend standing order 3106 just for item 2.1, which is the maiden speeches, and that we allow for five minutes. Okay, thank you Jill, I'll put that. Now, do we, we do have our devices there to vote? Right, okay, everybody would like to vote on that? Green for yes, red for no? Lift it up a bit, okay, thank you, right. All done? All done, sorry? Good? Okay, so we've done that. Are there any conflict of interest? Okay? Yeah, sometimes... How do councillors know that they've actually voted? Okay, there's a lot of learning going on here. Okay. So Shaun and Rebecca, you've got the... Waylaid by battery. That doesn't work either, okay, right. So that's one way of stopping a councillor voting. Not working, okay Shaun? Yeah, we might, can you sort that out crispier or...? Thank you. Right, are there any conflict of interest declarations? Oh, okay. Confirmation of the minutes, now this is the minutes of the inaugural council meeting on the 30th of October. I'm going to move that we approve those, seconded by councillor Sparrow, thank you. I'll put that. Again, if you can push your buttons, and councillor Rush, if you can raise your hand at the appropriate time. So all those in favour, I'll have to say aye for councillor Rush especially, yeah, he's voting aye. And those in favour otherwise, we'll push the buttons. All good? All carried, thank you, good. Now, we have one item not on the agenda, which you have been all made aware of. And that's an additional item, Chief Executive Recruitment Process. That will be dealt with at the end of the meeting and public excluded. And I'm going to move that council consider the item regarding Chief Executive Recruitment Process under items, as item 3.1, as a major item not on the agenda of the 20th of November 2019 council meetings. So I'm going to move that, seconded by councillor Calvert. If we can all, again, vote on that. Councillor Rush, if yours is an aye, is it?
Aye.
That's good. That's unanimous, thank you very much. Okay, well, what we're going to do now councillors, is it's an opportunity, it's a tradition we have, and traditions are good to be upheld. And I know that many people will have their families here in the audience. So we're going to do this in alphabetical order. So we have councillors Conde, Thun, Matthews, O'Neill, Paul and Rush in that order. So, five minutes, and the, is the device working there in terms of, can you get that started? When we start? Councillor Conde?
Etaiiwi o tene rohe, nati toa rangatira, me taranaki faunui, naamiihi maioha kiakoto. Tēnā tato e te fano te kōnehera poneke. Kau ko toku mōnga, ko aufero toku moana, noa Canada aho. Ko Stratheden, me wanganela toku waka. Ko nati poneke toku iwi, ko Joyce Dunmore toku tipuna. Ko Jenny Conde toku ingoa. He kaikōnehera aho, ki te kōnehera o poneke. Tēnā tato ka toa. I love pepeha because they tell you this little story about the person and where they come from. And so I want to explain a little bit about what that is in my story. So my story, my pepeha starts with my dad arriving by ship from England when he was two, in 1950, with his mum and dad. And he grew up in New Zealand and then went to Canada to do his PhD, where he met my mum, and I was born. And we moved back to New Zealand when I was six. And the first place we stayed when we got here was with my auntie who lived in Aufero Bay. And so my first memory of the ocean is standing on that rocky beach at Aufero Bay, looking out at the ocean. And when we got a house, we moved into a house in Johnsonville near Ormsloe College, so just nestled it at the bottom of Mount Koko there. So that's my mōnga. And I mentioned specifically Joyce Dunmore as one of my tipuna. She's my grandmother, my father's mother. And she was elected to Palmerston North City Council in 1968. And this is her councillor badge here on my lapal. She was only the second woman to be elected to Palmerston North City Council, and was the only woman on the council for her whole term. So times have changed a bit in 51 years. I'm now privileged to be one of 11 women on the council, which is pretty awesome. And I think times are going to change a lot more in the next 50 years as well. And whenever we're dealing with change, we need to remember that for some people, it's really exciting, I'm usually one of those. But it's also difficult and scary. And so we always need to remember when we're dealing with change that we all agree on mostly what we want for Wellington and what we're trying to build as a city. We want a city that's clean, green, safe, welcoming, connected, innovative, prosperous. We can mostly agree about all of those things. Where we disagree is about what's the best way to do that. And disagreement is good, it's healthy. Conflict can help us improve those decisions and make sure that things, that change is good, that we're doing it well. But it can be a problem when conflict and disagreement is standing in the way of decisions. So I think it's really important that we try not to make, use conflict to stymie decisions or delay decisions, but always try and focus on using it to improve the decisions that we're making. Because if we try to stand in the way of change, well, you really can't and you shouldn't try to stay in the way of change. Because when you try to stand in the way of change, it happens anyway, and it usually happens in a way that you don't like. So I think our role as a council and with our communities is to try and work through the changes that are coming to us and make it that we shape those changes so that we create a Wellington we all love to live in. In my personal, my portfolio of transport, you know, I stood and was elected on a platform of taking immediate action on climate change. And in transport, that looks like trying to provide more options for low-carbon transport. And, you know, many cities have been really successful in doing this. New York City is one that I often mention. They managed to grow their economy, to grow their resident population and cut their emissions by over 25%. And they did that, at least one of the things they did was by moving to low-carbon transport. They rolled out priority bus lanes, they rolled out cycleways across the city, they pedestrianised major streets, including Times Square. And, you know, when they did that, when they pedestrianised Times Square, they did it as a trial for a few months. And they did it temporarily, they put up, you know, temporary barriers and they used paint. And they gave people a chance to see what that change could look like and experience it and live it. And they, you know, put up plastic furniture to encourage people to sit in the middle of the street and start using and lingering in the space. And after a few months, nobody wanted to change it back. And the community had this great experience of exactly what they wanted that space to look like and how they wanted to use it. So they were able to use that when they then actually started digging up the road and doing the permanent changes. They knew the community had a strong idea about what they wanted and they were able to deliver that for them. Now, I drive an SUV. So I stood on a platform of climate change, but I drive an SUV and I understand that, you know, the convenience of driving. And I also understand that for many of us in our communities, driving is a necessity in terms of mobility. But I also understand that there is a fundamental tension in making our cities, which is that we have a limited amount of road space. And the fundamental tension in transport is that when you allocate more space for cars, you have less space for people and other ways to move around. And so essentially, when you make a city nicer for cars, you make it worse for people. So I think if we're trying to make our city more convenient for cars, if that's our number one priority in transport, that's really a race to the bottom. What's the point of making it easier to drive from A to B if nobody actually likes spending time and enjoys spending time in either place? So I think we have to be looking at that. And I'd like to finish with a pakutoki. Ko takai atarangatira hei korero. The food of chiefs is dialogue. Thank you.
And can I just say that that's also a tradition, which is to clap councillor's first speech? Don't necessarily get used to it because it won't necessarily happen at every...
Oh, rule number one. Ko rimutaka o ku maonga, ko waenua mata te awa, ko nga te pakihua me hainamana, o ku iwi, noa waenua mata aho, ko lori fun taku ingoa. I want to start by acknowledging those that have been in council before us and all of those who have worked to make Wellington the place that it is today. Thank you to my community who voted for me. It is a great privilege to represent you, to make decisions for now and for the future of Wellington. And I'd like to thank all of those who put in the mahi to help get me here. Like councillor Conde, I'll do a wee pepeha and weave that through my story. I am the great granddaughter of the first naturalised Chinese man in Loa Hut who serviced his community with a small empire of fruit and vegetable shops that started by growing vegetables in his back garden. I stood because it is important to hear and celebrate what our diverse and migrant communities have to offer our society. I am the daughter of a carpenter who was able to build his own fare for his fano by earning an income as one of the many hands who built buildings in this city. I stood because we all have the right to work for a fair living wage to provide for our families. I am the wife of a surfer. My husband and my happy place is spending time in our amazing great outdoors. I stood because so many of us want to do our bit to regenerate our environment, streams and oceans, and make sure we support those who are voluntarily working hard to do so. I am the mother of two amazing daughters who are thriving at one of Wellington's great educational institutions, Wellington High. But they, along with many of their peers, are fearful for their uncertain future with the impacts of a changing climate. I stood because I want to ensure Wellington is committed to a zero-carbon future through our action plan te atakura and so that my daughters can see that we stand up and do something when there is something we need to change. I am from the creative tribe of Wellington and in the 90s launched a fashion business along with the coffee explosion, the cross-pollinating boom of cafes, artists, theatres, bands, bars and DJs, who were all part of the creative enterprises filling the blank canvas of this city. I stood because I want to see the creative culture of Wellington thrive and be our capital's point of difference. And it is one that Wellington still hitches its reputation on today. I have been an entrepreneur and a business owner for over 20 years in Wellington and worked hard to build a business that was unique and that Wellington was proud to claim as one of its own. I stood to find ways to support our unique Wellington businesses so that they thrive as they are drawcards for the many visitors to Wellington. And thank you, as the holder of the Small Business Portfolio, I will work to make that happen. I am a Sustainable Business Award winner as I took my own business on the sustainability journey. And now I'm an active supporter of the Sustainable Business Community, a movement of organisations who are committed to purpose-driven business, creating exciting solutions for climate change, our natural environment, regenerating our food systems, providing low-carbon mobility solutions, zero-waste solutions and rebuilding communities. I stood because I am so inspired by the impact these businesses are having that my vision for Wellington is to be the coolest little sustainable capital in the world. So thank you for making me the holder of the Sustainable Business Portfolio. I want to make sure that council plays its part in unleashing the success of these businesses, whether it be by partnerships, council procurement, incubators, and whatever we can for a win-win so that we accelerate positive change and Wellington will be recognised globally as a leader in sustainability. I'm going to have to ask for extra time? Okay, yeah. Okay, I'll drop the waste worry a bit because you will hear a little bit about that in the future. Okay. As new councillor for Pakawakava Southern Ward, I will do the best that I can for our community and our city to work on these portfolios to have a positive impact on our financial, environmental, cultural and social outcomes. I do want to say at this point, I want to thank the team of DubCC for guiding us with our excellent induction process. One of my biggest learnings yet has come from the Te Tere Titi training. And that learning is that we must follow other councils around New Zealand and honour our partnerships with Manu Fenua. We will then be able to harness the full opportunity of collaboration to care for our place, our people and our future together. Tēnā koto, tēnā koto, tēnā koto ka toa.
Thank you councillor Thun, councillor Matthews?
Tēnā koto ka toa. Ngāmiihi maioha etaiiwi rohe, nga te toa rangatira, me taranaki faunui. Ko takaruna te maonga, ko waitemata te moana, noa tamaki makoro aho. Ko ngayo toku kainga enai nei. Ko David Matthews rawa, ko Maureen Matthews o ku matua. Ko Ewan Heron toku hua tani. Ko Thea Matthews rawa, ko Cameron Heron o ku tamariki. Ko Rebecca Matthews au, noa era tēnā tato ka toa. This is a new council. Yes, we have new members, starting a new triennium, but more significantly, it has changed. In some ways that are obvious to see, there has been a shift in our council and voters have elected young representatives. And they have elected unprecedented numbers of women. My male colleagues may not be aware that many of the important political conversations are happening, given our numbers, in the queue for the women's toilets. I don't suggest you join us. Some of our differences may not be as obvious as our gender or our age. Even though the only age group I can say I'm adjacent to is middle-aged. I come here today ahead of the curve in terms of some characteristics more commonly seen in some of our younger residents. I've never held a driver's licence, and while there is a driver and a vehicle in our family, I am often dependent on public transport to get around our beautiful city. And like half of Wellingtonians, we rent our home and will do for the foreseeable future. One outcome of the election for me was if our campaign was successful, home ownership would continue to be delayed for several years as there is a decided lack of affordable homes in the Farangi Ward. Like many, and even on a good family income, we could only afford to buy if we moved much further away from the city. The challenges for renters are, I suspect, providing challenges for our local democracy. With the transience of living in many different rental properties and with people moving from suburb to suburb, Wellingtonians may be putting down roots in very different ways from previous generations. And like me, even in a privileged position, they might, may lie awake at night worrying if their rental home will be sold and how they will find another place to live. That means their children can attend the same school or early childhood service. Our people need homes and our council has an important ongoing role to make sure we have them. Are our renters voting in our local elections, is a question I ask myself. This may be one of a myriad of factors we need to consider to improve our relevance to Wellingtonians and to ensure that our mandate as a council doesn't dwindle away to nothing. I firmly believe our city is for everybody, not just those with the deep community roots who have lived in their own home for many years. Holding the community engagement portfolio, I want to look at what we can do to ensure more of our residents feel ownership of our council and that we seek the views of those that aren't normally heard. The issues and challenges before us are bigger than ever. In the next three years, we can start to make decisions that will impact generations to come. We are in a position to build and rebuild our city, to deliver a mass transit system, to make our city more livable and to make our public transport once again the envy of our nation. To open a city library that can be the centre of our community. And to make the climate declaration more than just words, but actually change our city and become a carbon-zero capital. In reference to my portfolios, but also the journey that has brought me here today and helped make me who I am, I want to acknowledge two important groups of people. Firstly, all the disabled people, their fano, the disability sector advocates, advocates, the educators, who have taught me that difference is strength in my prior work, making education more accessible for all. As Hannah Gadsby says, difference is our teacher. If you fear difference, you learn nothing. From our disabled residents and their myriad of experiences, we can learn how to make our city better, more accessible, but better and more enjoyable for everyone. I look forward to learning more from the disabled community over the next three years and to standing alongside them to put their aspirations into action. And lastly, my living wage fano. The living wage movement has changed me, just as it changes the lives of people who move from subsistence wages to earning enough to spend more time with their families and participate in all our city has to offer. For me, Wellington City becoming our first fully accredited living wage council is the beginning of the story, not the end. How can we embed fair pay as a principle that helps define our city and shows our values to the world? If Boris Johnson, with all his other interests and distractions, could help deliver a fully living wage London Olympics, what can we achieve as a city? A living wage mātareki, a living wage library, a convention centre, a true living wage capital? Finally, I just want to thank the support of everyone that has got me here today and those people that will sustain me over the next three years. My friends and family in particular, all the Labour Party volunteers who helped me in the campaign and all the wonderful people in our communities in Farangi, Ormsloe Western. I will do my best to do you all proud. Kia ora.
Kia ora councillors, you might have to, oh, I'm so raspy. Unfortunately, I don't think the raspiness will go away, but I'll try not to speak too directly into the microphone. So tēnā koto ka toa. I'm going to first start with a few stories from my childhood and my community and where our community is today and what that means because I think that it's important to ground ourselves and why we're here and what took us here in the first place. So I grew up in Laual Bay, I went to the local school, but what I noticed growing up was a large group of my closest friends who permanently stayed in the council housing, had some different opportunities to myself. Their four walls were covered in decorative black mould and often it was quite hard for them to come to school because they faced different respiratory illnesses from the mould. And it was a difference of being up the road by a few hundred metres that meant that I was able to complete my education to the fullest extent and they weren't able to. What was supposed to be a council safety net was actually trapping and dragging people down at the time. And I'm incredibly thankful for the work that councils have done over the course of those years to make that situation more livable. But I acknowledge that we can always go further. As I grew up, my reality had changed in a few of my mates, but I realised a few others had not. But from a young age, it was a well-known O'Neill quip that we share in our family. You see, my mum took care of maybe around five other people on a single income in a rental home at different points. So it was always important that whatever we had, we shared it with others. The parting of the saying was to remember to those less fortunate, to value the privilege that we have and always to be kind and inclusive as we move through life. For me, I look around this ward and I see fantastic things that this council has put into action, but I think we could share a little bit more. Around last time, around this year last, this, around November last year, when I was considering standing for council, I went back to those same communities that I grew up with, the ones in the social housing or at different parts around the ward. And I noticed that there were still a couple of key challenges. A mate of mine, Melania, out in Strathmoor, she still talks about what it's like to feel isolated from her community. Her family is made up of seven people, four out of the seven hold six jobs between them. To their family, campaigns that focus on living wage, discounted bus fares and winter energy payments make massive differences. I remember trying to get her to submit on Let's Get Wellington Moving and to see if it's of mass transit and what that could do for the school trips in the morning. Decisions around city safety, effective transport, increased community services in that area, they really mattered to families like her and they really mattered to families like mine. I was talking to a mate of mine the other day, he's an Australian, and I was trying to talk about what it was like to celebrate Christmas in Wellington and how fantastic it was that we wrapped around the people that weren't able to celebrate it as full as some others. And I remember one Christmas, it was quite a skint evening, and I think it might have been Christmas Eve. And I remember coming to the door to find a local man from the church and he'd brought six mince pies with him. I'd never tried a mince pie before, I thought it was quite odd that there was a stranger giving me food, but my mum seemed to know him from back in the day and we trusted him. And I remember that Christmas, those six mince pies made a hell of a lot of a difference, we didn't have too many sweet food at the table. That's what it was like to celebrate Christmas in Wellington. And that's what it looks like when a community wraps around a home to make sure they get just as many opportunities as the others. That's why I put my hands up for council in the Eastern Ward. I wanted to make things a little bit better for my mates. I wanted to make a community that functions for more than just, more than just a couple of interests, but to represent all interests. And now that I've got the privilege to be here, I realise how much my presence in this council means to different generations and different groups. I'm incredibly grateful for the people that have come before me, for those who have broken the glass ceiling, those who have paved the way in my ward, made improvements to the housing that my mates now grow up in. I particularly just want to say a special tribute to former councillor Peter Gilbert and his mentorship of me throughout the campaign. He's always been an incredibly kind soul and he is someone who I will be following closely as I take on the natural environment portfolio. I want to thank Timotu Kaerangi for giving me this chance. I'm really going to work my butt off to earn their respect and to earn the respect for the next generation. I do not take this opportunity lightly and I will fight hard for a council that does you justice, gives you a chance to enjoy the little things in life, like a Christmas mince pie. Thank you, thank you to my supporters and to those who challenge me. Thank you to my family and all of Timotu Kaerangi, to the communities that raised me and to say that we share in our family and I will not let you down. Nātororo, nakutaku roro, ki ora ataiiwi.
Tēnā koto ka toa. Tua tahi ngāmiihi nuenui kīnga Manu Fenua o tēnāi rohi, taranaki faunui nga te toa, me te atiawa hoki. E tōtoko ana au i to rato mana motu haki, i o rato faanga ingawa ka toa. Tua rawa emihi ana ki te fano o Nancy Brunning. Moi mai rai terangatira. Heuri au noa ngātiawa me waikato tainui hoki. Heurio no ngātiawa me Waikato Taunui hoki, Kootamatha Paul Aho. My name is Tamatha Paul. I hail originally from the mighty Waikato and have found my way down here in Purnikee. And I hail from the iwi of Ngātiawa in the east coast and Waikato Taunui in the central North Island. From the view of the peak at Mount Victoria, down the dockside of Oriental Bay, across the moa Ngapukiahu of Mount Cook, amongst the birdsong and native ngāire of Arul Valley and Highbury, tracing the Kumutoto Trail through Calvin past my alma mater, Victoria University of Wellington, past the skyline of Tiaro dotted by the steeples of the city's historic churches, the cultural wealth of the heritage buildings in Thordon and at the artia of Pipitiā Malai. To the people of Pukihino Lampdun Ward, thank you for putting your trust in me to represent you for the next three years. I will continue to act as an active member of our community and to be prompt in my response to the issues facing us in our day-to-day lives and bring our collective voice to this table. I have been given the responsibility of the Climate Change Portfolio and Associate Community Wellbeing for City Safety and Youth. And it wasn't too long ago that the Golden Mile was bursting at the seams with over 40,000 Wellingtonians, both young and old. The streets were alive with cries for urgent climate action. Our city sits alongside the great harbour of Tada, which will one day swallow up large parts of our home. We can sit here and twiddle our thumbs or we can take decisive, future-focused action. This kind of action can sound scary, but it doesn't need to be. In fact, it should be something that we should all be excited for, as my colleagues have already alluded to. It looks like cross-collaboration between transport, infrastructure and waste portfolios. An implementation plan and then real urgent action for Te Aza Kura, our plan to become a zero-carbon capital city. But most importantly, each and every single one of us must give priority to our climate in every single decision that we make. In a time where we are seeing unprecedented violence against women and especially young women, it is imperative that our city is designed to keep our tāmarike, our rangatahi, our women, people with disabilities and other vulnerable communities safe. It is our obligation now more than ever and it doesn't take a lot to just look on the news and see how serious this is. We committed in our long-term plan to eliminate sexual violence in Wellington and I think that the possibilities in achieving this are endless and I look forward to continuing this work and I'm honoured to be able to carry on the mahi of my colleagues. Representing young people is an area that I'm obviously familiar with, but I now broaden my scope of responsibility to all rangatahi in Purnikee. Our voices are around the table and our youth council is incredibly intelligent and capable. The opportunity is here for us to take hold of our future and to work to create a city of the future. I'm just gonna share a tau parapara very quickly to summarise. Kia whakarongo akeo kite tangi ati manune ati ma tui. Tui, tui, tui'a. Tui'a i ronga, tui'a i raro, tui'a i waho, tui'a i roto, tui'a i te hereta'anga'ta. Ka'arongo te po, ka'arongo te au, tui'a i te moka'tanga'ta. E takia mai i hewaiki nui, hewaiki roa, i hewaiki paamaa ma'au. Te hono i wai roa kite faia'au kite wa'au marama. Tii hei, mai riora. Ngā muihi.
Thank you. I'd like to start by acknowledging mana finua. I also want to acknowledge the friends and family of those that are making their main speeches today, my new friends in the press. Also acknowledge the great people of the city council, we see a lot of you there, maybe some there, and acknowledge the mayor. But most of all, I'd like to acknowledge my new friends on the city council. I campaigned on a couple of things. The first one was unity. So, I'd spent 20 years living in Britain, came back to find a divided New Zealand, issues that are important but tearing us apart. My family were early settlers and they built this city. I'm sure they had disagreements, but they put them aside in order to produce the city that we now call home. And I'm really looking forward to working with you, my new whanau, and doing the same. It's a tremendous opportunity to be able to work with the diversity of people I see across and around me. You'd never get that in a boardroom. I don't know of any other situation where you take a leadership role and have people from all sorts of different walks of lives, mums, dads, older people, young people, Maori and of course from different ends of the political spectrum. I celebrate it. I'm so looking forward to it because it's a challenge. It's a challenge for all of us to do what we all want to do, which is the right thing for Wellington. That's why I asked the mayor to share the portfolio of urban planning with councillor Pennett and I was thrilled with the warm response I got to that proposal. But I also campaigned on common sense. I was elected by the good people, the very patient people of the East. And it is unbelievable that the families there are still reliant on infrastructure to get them out and about, families to sports, people to work, families to visit. With a piece of infrastructure built with a Model T Ford was the top-selling motor vehicle in the world. Since 1931, St Pat's Town has moved to Kiburni. We've had the ASB Sports Centre opened, the airport built in 1959, the third busiest, six million passengers, and they think that's going to double in the next foreseeable decades. Thousands of families living in the eastern suburbs call it home now. Hundreds of businesses populate Rongatai, where the works employing hundreds of hot commuters. Let's Get Wellington Moving brings hope. A wonderful package of infrastructure projects. And as an infrastructure financier and lawyer, I salivate with the prospect of being part of implementing that programme. We will see what the business case brings, but I can ensure a commitment to the eastern ward residents and to Wellingtonians, that I will apply rigor and a meticulous eye over those business cases. I've spent 20 years putting together business cases for major infrastructure projects, so I will ensure that rigor is maintained. Recently though, I was asked how I would measure success at the end of three years. My answer starts with the staff of the council, how they felt it went. Have they been valued? Has staff turnover gone down or up? Have they been part of the vision that takes us through to the next decades? But also, it's about how the public view us as their leaders. Have we been cohesive? Have we been united? We will disagree, there's no question about that. It'd be boring if we didn't. And I'm really looking forward to having forceful debates, as we already have, on some of the key issues of our time. No one is going to have a problem with that sort of healthy discussion. But can we bring it all together as one team and send a message to Wellington, we're all here for you? Because if we can do that, then that will be the measure of success.
Nicely timed there, bang on. Thank you all colleagues for those wonderful speeches. And what is so good is that you shared from the place you've come from, all the different stories that you brought and you bring to the table, all your different aspirations that you bring to the table. And hopefully we can put all those together and do something quite special for Wellington City. So, ki ora to all of you. I've got to move that we received the information and we thank, just dropped off, and we thank you for the speeches that we made. So, I'm gonna move that we do that. Oh, okay. The deputy mayor will second. We will vote on that. Councillor Rush, I'm sorry. Are you, oh, you've got a battery now, have you?
Just briefly. Just very briefly, just to say, I'm incredibly, oh, I'm incredibly proud of councillors. And I look forward to working along with the mayor, of course, working with all of you to achieve all of those aspirations. Plus, I know for the returning councillors, there's a whole set of aspirations as well. But it was very inspiring listening to you, all of you. Very proud of, very proud of you all.
Well done. Kia ora. Okay. Right, we will now vote. Councillor Rush, you now have a voting device that works. It's excellent. There we go. Yes, that's weird. Well done, well done. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so the next paper, we have paper 2.2, the Governance Arrangements for the 2019, 2022 Tranium. And look, just to follow on from what I've just said is that you've all spoken, those of you who've just spoken, have talked about the aspirations you've had. And what I've done is I've met with all of you at least a couple of times and many other conversations as well, was to try to give effect to those aspirations so that you're all put in a position that you can actually contribute significantly to the betterment of our city. Now, I'm going to move the papers in front of us, but there is an addition of a clause 3C, which is up there, and there's a couple of little tweaks there. So, the bits that are in red on there are the pieces that reflect the further conversations that we've between us had. So, we have all those changes there. Okay? So, there's a little change around from councillors Wolf, Day and Sparrow, who've essentially done a little bit of rotation there between those three committees and subcommittees. And then the addition of councillor Foon to the Revenue and Finance Working Group. And that was to try and make sure that the Revenue and Finance Working Group is not a formal subcommittee, but it does provide important information on our budgetary process to the annual plan, long-term plan committee. And it was felt appropriate that we have somebody from every ward on that, so hence the addition of councillor Foon. So, I'm gonna move that. Councillor Fitzsimons, one second. Does anybody wish to speak? To the whole thing? Yeah, okay.
It's my pleasure to second this and I think it's a very good paper and it does reflect the different strengths and experiences around the table. I just wanted to make one brief comment around the Regulatory Processes Committee considering traffic resolutions. I have been convinced through discussions that that is appropriate, but I just want to note my concern that when there are specific issues in a ward and communities don't feel heard, that we do comply with the convention that developed in the last triennium, which is to defer them to allow further discussions to occur. Because as a ward councillor, those traffic resolutions were a key opportunity for me to work with the community and understand it and try to get a good resolution for them. So, I've been convinced by the arguments that I've heard from the mayor and deputy mayor, but I do want to note that I'm watching that closely and am keen for it to be reviewed if it doesn't seem like it's working. Thank you.
Councillor Day.
Tēnā koutou i te whanau ho. I just want to quickly speak to the relationship with iwi. I'd like to acknowledge the comments of councillor Foon in her speech earlier. We are currently working through our process of developing an MOU and I just want to highlight to councillors that we will be talking about how we can honour that relationship appropriately. So, I really just want to give people a heads-up that we want to further our relationship with mana finua and we want to do it in a way that is respectful and making sure that we are decision-making partners. So, yeah, I look forward to those conversations and we will be signing our MOU with them really next year. Ngā muihi.
Councillor Day, councillor Pennett.
Kia ora, everyone. I'd just like to make two brief, or actually three brief comments. We have changed the name of our major decision-making committee. I just hope that that is not a nod to the past. The reason we had the previous name was that it was about the city, not, you know, sort of a non-branded name. I would like to take councillor Day's comments a little bit further. I would actually, if we are going to honour our treaty obligations and partnership, we should be talking about votes at the table. Okay? Right, so that's, right, so that's great to hear. Let's put that right out there, there should be votes. And then just want to reflect on the thing which Mayor Foster and I have had a long commitment to, which is around the resource management delegations. This for New Council is a particularly problematic area. We know that our communities sometimes are unhappy with the decisions that council makes. We have excellent staff, expert staff, and they should generally be allowed to get on with their job. But we have said that we do want to have a little bit more involvement in those processes. So, I appreciate the time that was given to me yesterday to talk to one of the members of ELT, just talking about maybe some more informal mechanisms to allow councillors to give some feedback without undermining the excellent job that staff do whilst honouring our commitment to the community, that we supported open decision-making and a very, very strong commitment to building our community. So, I look forward to working particularly with Mayor Foster and staff on that and hopefully we can come back with something that will balance our obligations to make good decisions under the RMA but also to meet the needs of our community.
So, just briefly in responding to some of the points that have been made, councillor Fitzsimons, yes, so I think this is an issue of just trusting that if there is an issue, those traffic resolutions, which is clearly of some moment and is causing some consternation, there is the ability to be able to push that up to the parent body, which for the Regulatory Processes Committee actually is council. But that is true for any body, that they can push it up to the parent body. The other one I was going to respond to is the RMA delegations. So, that's something which I was very insistent on putting in there. So, you will note in 11 and 12 that there will be reports back both on the issues around encroachments and on the issues around RMA decision-making. And that's really about signalling that sometimes, most of the time, things are done very, very well, but there are some times when you look at a decision and go, yeah, not really, that's not really been done the way which makes sense to us as elected members. We're the ones who the community approaches and who wear the flak. And sometimes it's about maybe looking for a better way forward. So, that's going to be a report back that we will get in the first quarter of next year on both of those two matters. So, it's been moved and seconded, if you can all vote in the appropriate way. So, page 77, the elected member appointments to council-controlled organisations, council organisations and external or joint committees and organisations. So, again, I just wanted to say my thanks to all of you, bless you. My thanks to all of you for working through these things. Tried again to try and give people the things that they wanted. Sometimes there were more than one volunteer for a particular area and other times there were no volunteers for a particular area. So, we had to try and fill them all. We got there. There was one that we didn't actually have to fill in the end. Councillor Young, you were going to do the Hutmano friendship house, but thankfully we no longer have to appoint somebody for that, so that saves that particular burden. So, anyway, again, there is the possibility of reviewing these sort of things later as we look at workloads and people are overburdened in a particular area or wish to make some changes, we can look at that at a later stage. But thank you also particularly to the deputy mayor for helping to work through that and again for your collegiality in doing that. So, I'm gonna move and the deputy mayor is gonna second. Speaking to it, councillor.
I just want to say that, you know, I think it was solid work that we did together to work out the best fit with everyone's interests and skills, but I'm actually really pleased with what we've ended up with. And I look forward to continuing to work with all of you individually to smooth the way for you to do the really good work I know you're gonna do in your portfolios and your other responsibilities. And my door is always open for you to come and see me if I can help.
Thank you. So, I'd just like to move a couple of amendments. Mayor Foster, I did text you about this, so I didn't get a response. So, can I, there's just two small things really. I'm just suggesting that the Wellington Ward Committee does have an alternate, which is our standard procedure. And I just suggest that I put myself there just because I've got the background on that. The same for the Regional Waste Management Committee to assure my colleagues that I will not be interfering. It's only if you're not able to attend for whatever reason, just so we don't have any problems if that does happen. But yes, it is your job to do the work and I won't be getting involved. And just the other thing is, it was a slight issue last triennium. I would like to suggest that councillor Rush is on the Wellington Fatua, just given that he has the water responsibilities. It's a critical part of that portfolio and we want to take an integrated...
It's a critical part of that portfolio, and we want to take an integrated approach. Obviously, and I have spoken to councillor Paul about this as well, climate change is critical, but I think it would be better if it was taken as a whole issue. And also, it will allow you, councillor Rush, just to really get across the water issues. There'll be a lot of useful information that you can learn. So if I could just move those, I hope they're not difficult, but they're there for the reasons that I've outlined.
Thanks councillor Pannett. Is there a second for that? And then I'd certainly like, you happy to second that?
I'll second it.
Well, I'll let councillor Paul second it. So I just wanted to check, you are comfortable with the Fatua?
Yeah.
Okay, you are, right, okay, that's the key, but I didn't want to do something that you weren't comfortable with there. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on that? Otherwise, I would suggest we accept that. Okay, so we've accepted that. Thank you. Is there anybody else? If it's accepted, we don't have to vote, yeah. councillor Calvert.
Thank you. And I'll obviously be supporting this paper, but I just wanted to call out the appointment to the multicultural council. We traditionally have one or two councillors at the multicultural council of Wellington, and it is really a council of community groups for various ethnic communities. But I think for me going forward, and after having spent the last three years on this council as well, and being very privileged to have been the representative, I think there's an opportunity for us going forward to look at raising its bar a bit, and actually looking at an advisory group for ethnic communities. It's really important that we start looking at how our council services best serve all our communities, and in particular ethnic communities, which we do have a gap. And I think this last 12 months has particularly brought home why we need to ensure that we do have more diversity of thought and understanding about different communities' needs, especially in the ethnic space. As sitting on the council, it is just a councillor, we don't have any office, council office support, and I think there's a real opportunity because we provide over 400 services as a council, and if we can get better leverage from that to make sure that we are serving in particular ethnic communities on this particular point. So I'm just, I'm supportive of this, but I just wanted to raise with you all my thinking in this space. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Calvert. Anyone else? Just briefly, in writing a reply, just thanks for the changes suggested councillor Pannett and councillor Calvert. Look, I think it's, there is the opportunity, we are intending, as I think you know, a review of the advisory groups that we've got. So that'll be something that Rebecca, you get to look at, and so that is something that can be, can be considered during that, during that process to whether it is appropriate to have another advisory group. But can I say thank you for the work that you did with the multicultural group last triennial, and I've met with many of them this triennial, and they were very pleased with the work that you did. We will vote in the usual fashion. Yeah, that change has been made, I've asked for that change to be made, you put it on there?
Yeah.
Sorry? Okay. You're going to put the change there?
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, so Fatua change as well, so Cyrus is just going to do that. Okay? Is the voting open?
Yes.
Not yet, it's not. There we go. Yep. Do you want everybody to press again?
Yeah.
Okay. councillor Pannett? Thank you. Done, well done. Thank you. Okay, to page 89, which is the triennial meeting schedule, this gives us some hint of certainty going on, going for the next three years as to where meetings are going to be. I would say to you, new councillors, the chances that it actually stays exactly like that are approximately zero, but at least it gives us a building block to go from. So I will move, seconded by, who wants to second that one? councillor Young, thank you. Anybody wish to speak to that? Didn't think you would. Okay, if you can vote. And now to page 135, the one that we always get media interest in, which is council remuneration. And look, I am going to say just a few words to start this, I was...
2.5 is exemption?
Oh, sorry, hang on, we've got one more to go. Sorry, I've jumped one. Thank you, Cyrus. Which one are we doing? Exemption? Oh, sorry, 2.5, sorry, I've jumped one. Page 129, so I'm not going to speak on this one. Exemption of council-controlled organisations from the statutory reporting regime, so I'm going to move that. These are just because they are so small, or in the case of the Joe Aspel Trust, the waterfront company essentially is a shelf company now, and the rural fire, again, very, very small. So if we had to go through the process, the reporting process, it would just be really onerous for those particular entities. So I'm going to move that, seconded by councillor Day. Thank you. Anybody wish to speak? Okay, we'll vote on that one. All done? Right, thank you. Now to page 135, which is the wonderful paper on remuneration. Now just, I was actually really surprised that the media didn't pick this up until yesterday, but I thought you'd have been into that like robbers' dogs, which is the normal process. The processes that the remuneration, these are set by the remuneration authority, the reason they're set by the remuneration authority is because, of course, there are things which councillors by and large would not want to deal with, because it's obviously, you know, if you make it too high, you get beaten up for that. If it's too low, then of course you are actually beating yourself up. So it's set by the remuneration authority, it's set on the basis for, and this is done for every single council across the country, so Wellington City is not unique in this, they do the lot. And they set for mayors and chairs, they set the exact number, so there is no room to move whatsoever, for the rest of us, for the councillors, whether you're in a regional council, a unitary council, or a city council, district council, they set a pool. And that pool is based on the size of the organisation, it's set on things like population, on things like the asset base, on things like the turnover, if you like, the income and expenses of the council. So just to put some things in context, you are the governance board, and it's a governance board which is not, like, most directors will go to some meetings and occasionally you will have some conversations with people in the staff. You're a governance board who, you not only go to these governance meetings, but you are, there's that grey line between governance and management, and you will be engaging with people throughout the organisation, and of course with many of our customers. Most directors on most boards do not go out engaging with their customers, we have to do that. And we are dealing with 216,000 customers, we're dealing with, as I think somebody said earlier, 400-plus different areas of business activity, if you like to call it that, 1,800-plus staff, $550 million in turnover a year, and a $7.3 billion asset base. So this is a very complicated organisation. The job that we have is a very, very responsible one, and obviously the remuneration authority has made the decision, it is made in terms of the size of the pool. The only thing that we can do is to allocate that pool between councillors. So the mayor is outside of that, they set specifically, so they set it down to the last dime. So what I heard from you as a collective is that what you wanted was something that was relatively flat in terms of the remuneration. And in fact, when we had gone through the process of deciding who did what, the reality is that most people have got a reasonably even, you know, there might be a little bits of ups and downs, but by and large you've all got a reasonably significant workload, there was nobody who was way below anybody else, and so a flat structure made absolute sense. So everybody is on the same remuneration, with the exception of councillor Day as chair of the committee of the whole, and the deputy mayor. So I'm pleased to move that, and all I would say finally is, it is a significant increase. So all I would say to you is, and I think a few of you said it in your maiden speeches, is go out and earn that money, show people you're worth it and make a difference. So I'm pleased to move that. Seconded by, who wants to second that one? Deputy mayor, thank you. Is anybody wishes to speak to it? councillor Sparrow.
I do feel the need to comment on this remuneration proposal. I'd rather I didn't, I'd be quite happy to stand my seat and agree to it, but in my view, and possibly that of others, a percentage increase of more than 11.3% on top of what we were previously paid is simply too large. And I know it's the remuneration authority which determines what is available to us, and we've heard all the reasons why, but does that make such a large increase right? Well, no, I don't think it does. It's a pity the increase hasn't been set at about, at half or less than half, that which is currently being proposed. Am I obliged to support the current proposal? Well, no, I don't think I am, and therefore I probably won't. That's all I have to say.
Look, I was well aware of the fact that many people did desire quite a flat structure. In reality, that could be achieved was if the 12 councillors who are outside of those other two positions actually accepted a relatively large increase. Otherwise, there would have been quite a big increase for the deputy mayor and possibly the chair of CSC. So we have made the decision, those of us who had anything to do with it, that we prefer, on balance, to see councillors' salary at a reasonably generous level. I think it is a reasonably generous level. There are still many in our community who would not actually want to do the jobs that you will be doing for the money you're getting. There are other people who will think that you're outrageously paid. I think the truth is that when you take the totality of what you do as a councillor, this is in fact a reasonably, it's generous, but I don't think it's exorbitantly unreasonable when you actually add up the hours that's involved in being councillor. I know for myself, I've only been home for dinner one night in the last fortnight, that's the honest truth. There's been, I've started some days at eight o'clock in the morning, and I've gone through with very little respite until, you know, eight o'clock in the evening. So it won't always be like that, this is a particularly busy time of the year, but being a councillor is actually a full-time job. You're never off duty, you go to the supermarket and you're recognised by your community, you go out to put the rubbish out and you're recognised by your community, you're out in the street, you're at church, you're at your clubs, and you're shoulder tapped by people wanting to talk to you. It's actually, this is a very all-encompassing and, and, yes, and you're dressing, councillor Day. But this is an all-accompasing job for the next three years. It's not our decision, the pool of money, all that we had a decision over was how to allocate it. We have chosen to allocate it to recognise the fact that all of us are part of a team. We have endorsed a flat structure for that reason. Yes, if you think it's a lot of money, councillor Sparrow, I guess you can vote against it, but that just puts you in the difficult position of actually voting against something you're going to get anyway. And I think, you know, it's up to you, of course. Thank you.
Look, I'd just also point out that whilst it might seem quite a significant increase, the remuneration authority looked at local body remuneration right across the board last year, and I know a number of us did submit as well as a council. So this in part is actually taking what came out of their findings and looking at local bodies, it wasn't just particularly focused on our council. So it is upping the rate by a considerable amount, but what it's doing is trying to find some fair compensation. And if you look at it in comparison to a backbench MP who gets 160k or more, plus a couple of hundred k for staff, you know, actually for what we do for full-time on the capital city as a council, and not only representation but governance skills, we are managing a budget of half a billion dollars operational expenditure a year, 250 million plus capital expenditure. So in, with our governance and with our representation, and as councillor Free said, you know, we are out a lot of the nights, evenings, our weekends, and also the work during the day. So, you know, we know it will seem a lot of money to some people, but also it's not a lot of money for others, especially in our city. So I think it's a fair increase.
Thank you for your comments, colleagues. Of course, we do have the option to give some money away, and I'm sure some of us will be doing that, you know, particularly to Wellington ratepayer funded organisations. I'd just like to shout out to the REM authority for being very, very progressive on the childcare allowance. That is fantastic. As someone who has been a working mother in paid work since the day my children were born, that has been a significant burden on our family. I'm not going to claim it because the salary I think is there, but it's absolutely critical to allow people to participate in our democratic decision-making processes. There is no childcare in this country at the weekend that is affordable or in the evenings. Now, whether there should be is a difficult issue, but nevertheless, some of us do need childcare at difficult times where the education system does not provide it. And so essentially, that is removing a really important barrier to participation. And, you know, my view is that everyone brings something, but certainly when you are a parent, you do bring a useful perspective that does help with better decision-making. So I really want to be grateful to the REM authority, you know, like, way of due, should have been done a lot longer, but it really will help particularly women participate in local government, because we know while we are an exception, this is not the case all around the country.
Just in responding to some of the things that you've raised there, look, I'll start off, councillor Sparrow, it would be, and I did, when we had that conversation about this yesterday, it would be very much a luxury vote. The reality is, this is the reason that the remuneration authority says you have to fully allocate the pool, you have no choice. So, I mean, if a whole lot of us voted against it, you'd still get the same outcome. Actually, probably the remuneration authority, the remuneration authority would probably then make the decision as to how to allocate, but they would still allocate the full pool. And you might not like the way in which they allocated the pool, but probably they'd take the guidance that we've already got there in front of us and probably do exactly what we've suggested. So it is very much a luxury vote. As councillor Pannett in particular said, there is the opportunity to give some money away if that is what you choose to do. And councillor Sparrow, we have talked, and a number of us have talked about one of the things that we could do, which I think will send a good message to the community, which we will follow up in terms of contributing to our own costs. So we will pursue that. The other point to make is just the deputy mayor's comments there. Look, there's a few times, there have been times in the past when council has deliberately chosen not to pay itself, so we took out mileage allowances, and we said, right, we will pay for mileage allowances. Now, you know, not everybody will drive, but even if you take, even if you take public transport to get somewhere, it still costs. Now, that is part of doing your job, quite often we'll be moving yourself around the city, a lot of places at the moment councillors pay for that. That's the way it works. Secondly, we, so we also chose at one point in time, which we are now not allowed to do, I did ask that, we're now not allowed to do, is to pay the community boards from within the pool, but we're not allowed to do that anymore. So that's been taken out, so that choice is not available to us. So in the past, councils have deliberately chosen because we wanted to be seen to be reasonable about these things, not, to essentially penalise themselves or ourselves as a group in terms of the remuneration that we took. The other things, just to remind you about the joys of the job, and I'll probably miss a few, you pay your ACC levy, both as an employer and as an employee, that does not happen for many people. You don't get any super adulation or KiwiSaver. You also are taxed at 33 cents in the dollar because it is assumed it is secondary employment even when it is not. So you're taxed at 33 cents in the dollar, and you might by the end of the time, you know, a year later on, when you claim your tax or you do your tax return, you will get that back, but meantime, the IRD has had the use of a third of your salary. And then, of course, the redundancy provisions are spectacular, which is if you are voted out or you stop, it is, it is three or four days. That's it. So there are some, you know, there are some things which are not particularly well looked after, and that is true for all of us. So just bear that in mind as part of the overall global package. So anyway, I'm going to put the motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, all of us, if we could press again, please. Thank you. Now, what I think I will do is, because it saves me doing it later on, is to go into public excluded now, and then we'll take the break for morning tea. Yep, okay. So I'm going to move that we, I know he's not, but when he arrives, he will be there. I'm going to move that we move into public excluded for the last item, which is the the additional item. And the reasons are set out there, which is, it's around chief, chief executive recruitment process. And the reason for going into public excluded is to protect the privacy of natural persons and I can assure you living other than deceased. And also in that resolution to have Geoff Summers stay because of his expert advice. He's not with us yet, but he will be here shortly after the morning tea break. So I'm going to move that, seconded by councillor Calvert. I'll put that. And that will be to exclude all staff as well. Councillor Wolf? Done. Thank you all. We'll take a break for, we'll take a break for morning tea, come back in about 15 minutes.